I'm going to open up the January 18 regular meeting for the Board of Commissioners. And at this point in time, I'd ask everybody to stand for the presentation of colors by the Junior Girl Scout Troop 97 Carr United Methodist Church.
Color Guards advance.
Prepare to post the colors. Post the colors. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color Guards return to your post.
At this time, I call on Father Joseph Dion from St. James the Greater Catholic Church for the invocation.
Good evening, and we wish on this evening to offer a prayer, which we have a very formal book of prayer translated into every language, known language in the world, in a specific invocation just on an occasion like this when a new Board of Commissioners begins a new year. Let us ask the Lord's blessing on all the proceedings of this evening and throughout this new year 2011. Blessed are you, Lord God of mercy, who through your Son gave us a marvelous example of charity and the great commandment of love for one another. Send down your blessings on these, your servants, the Board of Commissioners of Cabarrus County, who so generously devote themselves to helping others. When they are called on in time of need, let them faithfully serve you in their neighbor. We ask this through Christ our Lord, who lives and reigns with you, and the Holy Spirit, one God for ever endeavor. Amen.
Now, if the young ladies from Carr United Methodist Church would come up, introduce theirselves, and when you come up, if you will come over here to your left, our right, for a pen to be given to you for your coming up and doing the presentation of colors. If you'll come up to the microphone and tell us who you are.
I'm Monica Graham. My parents' names are Antoine Graham and Krista Graham, and I go to Rocky River.
Thank you, Monica. If you'll go over and see Vice Chair Poole.
My name is Bridget Tidings. My parents are Shelby and Phyllis Tidings, and I go to Carolina International School.
Thank you, Bridget.
My name is Kayla Key. I go to ATL, and my parents are Christian Key and Kenner Key.
Thank you, Kelly.
My name is Hala Wagner. My parents' names are Robert and Sharon Wagner, and I go to Arbron McAllister Elementary.
Thank you, Hala. For everyone's knowledge, Commissioner Burridge is not here this evening. He had knee replacement surgery today, and from what we understand, he's doing very well, and we wish him a quick recovery. I know that it's going to be tough, but I know that he'll be able to get back up here and be with us at our next meeting. We have tonight before us the minutes from November 15, November 16, December 6, December 20. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as they've been previously sent out?
Move they be approved?
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next matter that we have is the agenda that's before us. There is an addition under I-1, which is the EDC Quarterly Report, which Mr. Cox and I believe Mr. McDaniels, the whole crew will be coming up to present with that information. And also, I think we have, yes, we have a closed session. Now, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as it's presented?
So moved.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next matter that we have is found on page 79 of our agenda is a recognition and presentation. And at this point in time, I would ask that Roland McDaniels, who is the Executive Director, McReynolds, excuse me, Executive Director of the Carolina Farm Stewardship Association, Debbie Boss, Cooperative Extension Director, Erin Newton, Local Projects Foods Project Coordinator, and Vice Chair Liz Poole to come up to the microphone. There is a presentation for an award that the county has received, and I would call on Mr. McReynolds to let us know about this award.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the members of the Board for the opportunity to speak with you all here this evening. I am the Executive Director with the Carolina Farm Stewardship Association. We are a member-based nonprofit organization that has been around for about 32 years, and we help people in the Carolinas eat and grow local organic food. And for about the last 10 years, we have been recognizing nonprofits, NGOs, and government agencies as our institution of the Sustainable Institution of the Year. And in looking to recognize our Sustainable Agriculture Institution of the Year, we look for entities that are having, that have demonstrated a commitment to sustainable agriculture, that is agriculture that is good for land, good for people, and good for farmers. We look for entities that are taking, besides demonstrating that commitment, that are actually doing innovative things to further that commitment, and we look for entities that have an impact in pursuing and promoting sustainable agriculture. And Cabarrus County has achieved amazing things in all three of these measures and has demonstrated its commitment to sustainable agriculture, has demonstrated innovative ways of thinking about promoting sustainable agriculture in the county and throughout the region, and is having an impact through your farm incubator programs, your establishment of a county local food advisory council, through your support for the development of the livestock processing facility here in the county, for your engagement with the rest of the state to promote the upcoming meat conference here in Cabarrus County, and on a whole host of other measures. This county is a model for how other counties in this state and throughout the southeast can help their communities by helping their farmers to produce the food that people want to eat and protecting our communities. So it is my pleasure to recognize Cabarrus County with, as the 2010 Institution of the Year from the Carolina Farm Stewardship Association. Thank you very much, Vice Chairman Poole. Your work has been so important to us, so here you go.
Thank you very much. That was, it is something that we strive to try and accomplish, to help out in all different areas in the county, and with your all's help and with others, that hopefully we'll be able to succeed. Thank you. Next matter that we have or is before us is informal public comments. I have one card, and that's from Bishop Roland Jordan, Bishop Jordan.
Good evening, Commissioner, Mr. Chairman. I had a couple items here I wanted to bring to your attention. I think some of them I brought here before, but I do want to thank you for the good work you're doing for our schools and our kids. And we thank you for having Monday off for our kids. Education is very important. I know Dr. King was wanting to be in school, but he wanted to build their activity in the community with our people, so we thank you for that, and we continue to ask y'all to do that for us. There's two names that have been on the commission, Ms. Betty Austin and then Ms. Betty Edelman. I'm not sure exactly how to spell Ms. Edelman right offhand, but I'm quite sure some of y'all remember her. And in the future, if a school would come open, we ask them two names would be considered. And I ask again for the proclamation annual for Dr. Martin Luther King for Veteran Day, Remembrance Day, and Black History. Black History's coming up in February, but we still want the proclamation for this year for Dr. Martin Luther King. And we ask for your support in the community on our activity. I was in Salisbury, and it was a blessing. All the commissioners was there for the breakfast in Salisbury. So I say, why come they can't do it in Concord? And so we ask for your support there. Like Dr. King said, don't look at our color, but look at our character. We all here together in this, and there's no white and black eyes, you know? So we just thank God for you, and God bless you and heaven smile upon you and give you peace.
Thank you, Bishop Jordan. Next matter we have is old business, the resolution from APAC, Commissioner Carruth.
Yes, we've met, the APAC met, we had to delay a meeting because of the weather, and then we had, our meeting was scheduled this past Thursday. We had a, I believe it was a three-hour-long meeting in which we went through our resolution in detail, line by line, pretty much, and the committee pretty much has settled on the resolution, however, there was some question about some particular language in one of the provisions. And we were scheduled last night to have a teleconference, but I realized about 4:00 this afternoon that I would have had a secret illegal meeting if I'd done that, and I didn't, God forbid, I get accused of having a secret illegal meeting. So we had to cancel that, and we rescheduled that for next Monday before our retreat on Thursday, I mean on Friday. And what I would like to do is for us to be able to review the resolution at our retreat, but also be prepared to vote on that. It remains February meeting. I think it's important to do it then rather than after retreat, but we would also like some time at the retreat to talk about the overall concept, which the entire committee agrees on, which is the transition of the, of our public animal shelter, or the sheltering part of animal control, to the Humane Society, along with a contractual relationship between the county and them. And in that doing so, we would also, anyway, I've met with the sheriff. He's in support of this concept, and I've also met with the new executive director of the Humane Society, and she is as well in support of it. And I think it's something that all of us are excited about, because I think it's something that we're going to see a new chapter turn, and I think setting ourselves up for success as our county continues to grow larger in setting up how we're going to handle the issue of stray dogs and cats, as well as those that are lost and homeless, so.
I take that as a motion to.
Table this to a retreat.
To discuss it at the retreat, but also have it at the.
February.
February 21st meeting. We have a motion. Any discussion?
Excuse me, I just have a question, and you might not be able to answer tonight, which is perfectly fine, if you could answer it at the retreat. I believe in the past, and I could be wrong, but the Humane Society has pulled dogs and cats, and we've had, there's a couple other local organizations that have pulled. So the question I would have is, I mean, I understand the concept of the Humane Society taking it over. Would there still be the availability, the ones that come to my mind, which are just the ones that I happen to know about from years past, is Cabarrus Pet Society, I think they were involved before, Kitty City, I think some, I don't know how much, but will they also be included in the loop so that there's some way that organizations like those that are longstanding and have a history of adopting pets will also have access, and do they currently have access to dogs and cats at the shelter?
Yeah, they currently have access. Animal Control has already taken the means and have opened the shelter up pretty much to let, you know, kind of dispel, I think it was more of a myth than anything, a perception that you couldn't draw, get animals out of animal control unless you were the Humane Society. But for us, best to understand how it has been set up in the past is that it's kind of, I would call it, for lack of a better term, mission creep that has occurred on the part of animal control to keep expanding the shelter where they're holding dogs and cats beyond the waiting period that legally they have to hold them. And what's, then during that period of time, those dogs and cats that were not pulled by the Humane Society, were not offered the Humane Society, then, you know, our animal control officers were busy contacting, you know, Kitty City, Cabarrus Pet Society, other folks in the community to get those out of the shelter. What will happen is, is that in part of the provisions and in the contract we'll have with the Humane Society is they'll be required to show us how they will utilize the other rescue organizations, and they'll be required to, they'll work closely with them, and they've already been some bridges built there with those organizations, so that there will be an active link to those other organizations. We, we would see it as we'll continue to have the APAC, and the APAC then will be made up of representatives from all those organizations, and we'll kind of be able to kind of keep an eye on and oversee kind of the whole program from that perspective. So what you're actually doing then is taking that sheltering operation that the sheriff, Animal Control, has been running and pulling that and putting it underneath the Humane Society. And there's, you know, it's going to be, still some stubby pencil work to be done in that period of time to do that, but that's kind of the overall concept, so.
I mean, I know that there are a number of organizations that have been active, so I would want to make sure that whatever happens, that everybody is involved, and I think the Humane Society is great, so I don't have any problems with them, but I want to make sure everybody's involved. Do you know, which, again, if you don't know the answer tonight, it's fine, the Humane Society, I know, I believe was looking at buying a facility. Are they still on track to buy the facility, and would they still operate the kennel portion that's on our grounds in conjunction with the new facility? So would they operate two different locations? Is that how that's going to?
As I understand, that's how that will work, and they'll be, they have already purchased the facility. I was actually, saw it yesterday, or Sunday, rather, and the plan, I'm understanding, is, and I don't want to put words in Judy's mouth, but it's, the plan is that that will become kind of the retail adoption center, the new place will, and that they will have both places and, I mean, we're, our facility was built in mid-'90s when we had, what, 85,000 people, and we've basically doubled our population since then, and we're still, so that is needed. But it will allow them to have that where, as we develop the community pet evaluation matrix that will determine how, you know, kind of how you triage the dogs and cats as they come in, that those that are most adoptable will go, most likely will go to that retail center for adoption, and then work with the other ones as well, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Did you need a second?
We have a motion, we have a second.
I've got a question. Where's the new facility?
It's on Wilshire Court. If you go to down 601 Bypass, and you turn on Wilshire like you're coming back in towards town, back in towards Union Street, you take the first left, and there's a little industrial parking there, and it's on the right-hand side.
Is that, is that facility complete, ready to go, or is it going to take, yeah, it's going to take a while to?
Yeah, still work to be done, actually. But it was a former kennel and grooming facility, so it already has a lot of the, the runs are there, the, those things are there already in place.
Any other discussion? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next we have is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do we have a second? We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is new business, page 162 of our agenda, which is the Emergency Management Cabarrus County Hazard Mitigation Plan, which will have a public hearing after presentation by Mr. Smith.
Good, excuse me, good evening. Tonight, we're requesting to have a public hearing, and at the conclusion of that, adoption by resolution of our hazard mitigation plan. This plan is required to be locally adopted by FEMA and North Carolina Emergency Management to maintain eligibility for post-disaster funding as well as pre-disaster grants. We have updated this plan, which is required every five years. FEMA has given us a conditional approval based upon our local adoption, so, again, if we could have a public hearing, if I could address any questions the Board may have, and at the close of the public hearing, adopt the plan by resolution.
Any questions for Mr. Smith at this time? I'll open this up for a public hearing as it relates to the County, Cabarrus County Hazard Mitigation Plan. You may want to speak for or against. Seeing none, I'll close this public hearing. Any further discussion from this Board? We have a motion to adopt the resolution as presented by Mr. Smith. We have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Next we have is G-2, is a proposed text amendment, text 2010-00005, in a public hearing. Mrs. Morris.
Good evening. This is a proposed text amendment to our zoning ordinance to add Tattoo Studio as a permitted use in the GC and Office Limited Commercial districts. If you all remember, we talked about the home occupation part of it. We have taken that out, so it is only for GC and LC as a permitted by right use, and we do need to hold a public hearing.
Are there any questions for Mrs. Morris at this time? Thank you. I'll open this matter up for a public hearing. For anybody who wants to speak for or against the proposed text amendment is adding Tattoo Studio to the zoning ordinance as permitted by right use in general commercial, which is GC and Office/Limited Commercial LC zoning districts. Anybody who wants to speak for or against? Mr. Marlowe.
I'm Larry Marlowe. I live on Odell School Road, and I think I saw in y'all's agenda, the last part of it, that you had the Odell community possibility of having tattoo potters, and we would be strictly against that. I think I seen on that map that you had the Odell community. We got everything else out there. We don't need tattoo potters, because if we get tattoo potters, we'll have beer joints next. So if you could eliminate Odell community from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe. Anybody else want to speak for or against? I'll close the public hearing at this time. Mrs. Morris, if you could just address the different areas and the need for outlining the areas and what, as close as you can specifically say where those areas are.
I believe that the area that Mr. Marlowe was talking about is, there is a small piece of GC which is located around the area, you all, I believe you have this map.
It's on page 335 of our.
It's located around the old Odell Fire Station. There is a piece of GC Commercial there, and I think that's the area that he's talking about, but it is a very, a very limited area. So if you're looking at your, at your map, if you head out 73, you can see there's a piece on the corner, and then another piece as you go down 73, and I believe that those are both occupied. The piece on the corner may be the piece that's vacant, that has had the gas station sign there for a very long time, if you're familiar with that parcel. And I think in order for that to develop, if they needed utilities, they would actually have to annex into Kannapolis anyway.
So right now, it does not have utility access?
No, anything north of 73 that needs utility access would be subject to Kannapolis utilities, and also they would, they typically request an annexation, which would kind of take it out of the, out of the picture for the county.
Right, so once it goes into Kannapolis, then it's under Kannapolis's zoning ordinances?
That's correct.
Okay.
Have a question. And I don't know that you have our agenda in front of you, but on page 327 of our agenda, 326 to 327, at the end of 326, it states home occupation, number 16 zones permitted based on standards, and it has standards list of home occupations, and under that is listed One Chair Tattoo Studios.
If you remember, we presented you with everything that went to the Planning and Zoning Board so that you had all of the materials, but the text amendment that is before you this evening is only for limited commercial, commercial uses in LC and GC. It is not to amend our ordinance to add this particular use as a home occupation.
That's in red, so I presume that meant that that's going to be deleted, or will not be included in the text.
That was what was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, because they talked about it. So we gave you all the materials that we gave to them, just so that you knew what they looked at and what they talked about, but the actual text amendment before you is only for GC and LC as a commercial use, not as a home occupation.
And one thing in our work session that you mentioned that I don't think has been brought up tonight is, this is, if we do not do this, well, excuse me, this is being brought on because of lawsuits in other communities and other jurisdictions that then has allowed the tattoo potters to go anywhere within that jurisdiction.
That's correct. We currently do not have it as a line item, so it needs to be added somewhere prior to our ordinance being challenged.
And if we did not add it prior to the ordinance being challenged, if the ordinance is challenged, the likelihood of success is great, and then it could be placed anywhere?
Correct.
Okay.
So this doesn't allow you to regulate where it is placed.
If we do it this way?
Correct.
Thank you.
Looking at the map, the Odell community is not the only area that this would be permitted. Is that correct?
That's correct. Anywhere where you see, if you see at the bottom where it has the red and the yellow, so those areas on the map are the areas where it could be permitted. As we talked about in the work session, there is an area around Lane Street that is still in Cabarrus County. There are those couple of parcels at Odell and 73, and then there is the section out by the Speedway, which actually is the Mobile Home Park. Is that yellow, bigger yellow tract that you see. And then there are some parcels available along 2427 closer to Midland.
Right, correct.
So essentially, what I guess we would be, if we don't take any action on this and don't change this, and it stays the same as it is now, I know we could possibly get the legal challenge, but pretty much, you know, we're looking at, it's still a home occupation. Somebody could still go anywhere, somebody's next-door neighbor could set up one in their basement, and there's nothing we could really do about it. But if we, with here, and I understand Mr. Marlowe's concern, but I think by saying it's in the Odell community, we're talking about really four distinct parcels of land that is restricted to in the county where it has that zoning, unless we went and did a cart block zoning of entire part of the county to general commercial, and then it would open up for that. So that's what, by doing this, we're actually making it more restrictive than it is now.
That's correct. It isn't addressed in the ordinance. Something that is not addressed in the ordinance is typically prohibited by, it's prohibited if it's not addressed, if it is not listed as a permitted use. And somebody would have to pursue a text amendment to add it to the ordinance, so administratively, we are proposing that it be added to the ordinance in light of the court challenges so that we can, you know, say ahead of time what zoning districts they could be placed in.
The likelihood of them, somebody actually, even though we're permitting it, actually locating on one of these parcels is pretty slim anyway, so, I mean, we don't know, I mean, but, yeah, you never know.
Well, you know, getting back to your first statement, Commissioner Carruth, is I think the first thing that would need, that needs to be looked at is, is the, if someone wanted to put a tattoo parlor anywhere in the county, they have to first, if it's in the city limits, they have to go by the city ordinances, because although it's in the county, we have no control over that. So if it is not in the city, then if it's strictly in the county, then we are allowing it just in very small areas that are already industrial or general commercial.
The commercial districts, yes.
Okay. So that would be the second. And then, under that is, even though it may be a site within the county, if it's not, if utilities are not there and they need utilities through a city, then it takes it out of the county's responsibility, and then it falls back into the city's responsibility because they'd have to annex it.
Right, so we're.
So that it even gets. So that it even gets.
Or restricted.
It still falls back to what the cities are looking at doing for the most part. I'm not saying every one of these parcels, but the vast majority of the parcels, before you can develop a business there, you're probably going to have to be annexed into that city's or a city's city limits.
That's correct. Unless they found an existing empty vacant building that they could go into, any, a lot of these parcels are already occupied, especially if you look at the Littles Mobile Home Park out by the Speedway. I mean, it looks like it's a lot of property that could be developed, but at this point it can't because it's a mobile home park. A lot of them are already occupied with other uses. So until those uses turned over, or if they wanted to develop something new and needed the utilities, then that's where those conversations would have to happen with the municipalities as utility providers.
And I know, Mr. Chairman, there's been a little confusion, I know, over this, especially from some news reports, but, and I think this is important for the public to understand, is that this is not an individual coming to us asking us to rezone property to allow them to build a tattoo parlor. This is us taking the action on existing zoning. And again, I go back to Mr. Marlowe's comments, I don't think we can, the only way you could, the only way you could eliminate it is to go to that property owner and downgrade their property, their zoning back to change it to residential or some other use besides general commercial.
That's correct. It would apply to any existing commercial properties that we have on the books, which is the map that you have in front of you, and if somebody really wanted to pursue it, they could ask for a rezoning of a particular property, but that would have to be consistent with the land use plan, designating it as commercial or retail, or, you know, it would have to be a really good location and bring a lot of jobs or something for people, for the board probably to consider not following the land use plan.
Okay.
Well, for clarification, I have no tattoos. In case somebody wants to know, this arm has no tattoos on it, in case you saw the editorial cartoon. Either is this one?
Will it be T-A-T-T-O-O?
It would be spelled correctly if I had a tattoo, though. Yes, that would be correct. But because of the legal implications, I would make a motion that we approve the text amendment.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next that we have is G3. It's 2010 recap of the Cabarrus County Fair. And if anybody has not had the opportunity to meet Mrs. Parker, she is our new fair manager as of three weeks, four weeks prior to the last year's fair.
Correct.
So, Mrs. Parker.
Good evening. I want to thank the board. You guys have always been a great supporter of the fair, and I know we had several comments from employees, volunteers, and fairgoers who saw each of you out there, so we appreciate it. I'm here to kind of recap our outstanding year. We actually, the 2010 fair was our best year ever. We had 88,588 attendees this year, which is the best we've seen since moving to the arena. We were fortunate enough that the weather helped us with that. Hopefully it continues next year to help us with that. We only had one wet day, and it ended with sun coming out right before the sunset, and that was our first Saturday. One of the main changes we made this year to our fairgrounds was a slight change layout, which proved to be very beneficial for our fairgoers. We changed where the kiddie lands were. When you come into that front entrance, it was in the back, and we moved it to the front, and we got overwhelmingly positive comments from several different folks, mainly those who have strollers. It's very difficult when the fairgrounds get very hectic to get through to the back, so it's user-friendly for them to just come right in. They can buy their tickets for the rides and stay over there, and our vendors had nothing but great things to say about it, because before, apparently, they called it the circle of death. And now we have them in line waiting to chomp at the bit because they got so much. So our sponsors, our vendors, our fairgoers are really happy with that. We're going to continue with that new layout based on the results we got from some of our post-event reporting, and we have even had some initial discussions about putting some asphalt down there to make it even more user-friendly moving forward for our fairgoers. Along with our record-breaking people coming through the gate, we got more folks buying ride tickets, so we broke records with that number also. And in addition, we had more people enter things into the fair. As a result of that, we are looking very hard at adding some different categories and doing some improvements to some of those departments in the future. We think it's very important to increase the livestock area, maybe even the size of it, and most importantly, our education booths. There's a lot of work that we can do there. In addition to some changes we're looking forward to, we had a great year, and a lot of our entertainment, that was the most popular, which we noticed halfway through the week and actually pulled my aside and said, why are we bringing all these big groups in that nobody knows when some of our local bands, where we can save some money because we're all in a budget crunch, and bring in the local folks who need it, who are going to get the pull, so we're looking to do that moving forward. But overall, we received just great feedback on this year's fair. We got some great comments about things that are necessary to keep. We got some great comments on some, some good additions, and some things we can improve upon, and hopefully every year we continue to get that great constructive criticism, because it's only going to be a great county fair if we continue to listen to that. So, as Jay mentioned, I want to kind of close briefly and let you all know. If you don't know, I only came on a few weeks before the fair, so I think it's very important to say, the success this year was from our volunteers. They put over 1,500 hours in, and all of the other county departments, including the arena and event center, they worked very hard. They stepped up because we came on so early beforehand, and really, the success this year is because of them.
Any questions for Mrs. Parker?
I just want to make a comment. I love the fair. I went just about every day, just to get my exercise in and walk a couple laps around and see what was going on, and I thought it was great. The only comment that I had from a couple folks, not a lot, but a couple, was, it may have been the year before, we had barrel racing in the arena itself, and I had some folks, actually this weekend, this past weekend, say that they thought that was a really good addition. My presumption is that that's a little expensive to bring the dirt in and set it up and everything, but they just said, like I said, I had some friends that said they, they missed that in the fair, and they would hope that at some point in time, if that could be brought back in, reasonably priced, of course, that they would appreciate it. And then the other comment I had was from some high school kid, well, actually, they're college graduates now, but that had performed a couple years ago, that, again, it would be nice to have local groups that come out, because, you know, I would tell, if I knew somebody was there, then I'm going to tell, you know, if I was the mom, I would tell everybody to come out for that night and hear my kids' band, and so I think that would be a great idea if we could get some local folks. But I think you guys, everybody did a great job at the fair this year. It was very enjoyable for me to walk around, so thank you for everything, and please pass that along to all those volunteers that work so hard.
Definitely will. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's important to know over 1,500 hours of volunteer labor. That's, that's something that, that's amazing. So those volunteers, you know, really need to be thanked and appreciated. But I have a question. Under attendance breakdown, it's on the right-hand side, adults 54%, you know, it's got senior, child. What is the free?
Free is, is children under five, but we offer several different days, gate specials, where they can get in for free. We do a blue ribbon cutting ceremony the first Saturday, so for a couple hours, it gives those who might be on a tighter budget to come in, and throughout the week, we kind of continue specials like that. So those who don't, maybe don't have the money to pay on other times, they have ample opportunity to come in at no cost.
And also, one of the days is bringing in two or three, four cans of food.
Correct.
To help out our pantries, four cans of food. And I know that Mrs. Honeycutt, Mr. Downs, and Mrs. Dubois, and Monk, a lot of other people, spend a lot of time packing up transfer trailer trucks or taking it in, so that's, that's tremendous.
This, this year, was there a day with church bulletins that you could get in?
They changed the church bulletins to the day for the canned foods.
Because I know that's been something in the past.
With the number of attendance that we have, I mean, it's 88,000, and just looking through here, it's ranged from 3,700 to a little over 17,000 on a day. How is parking out there with the 17,000 versus the 3,000?
Parking can definitely be a problem. It's something we need to look at. There's a couple other options for some lots that need to be cleaned up around there, and it's definitely on one of the forefronts of our minds for next year, because we did have record-breaking numbers, and there were certainly days that we, it was very difficult to keep up with it. The Sheriff's Department and the arena staff did a wonderful job trying to keep up with it, including the transportation, but we, we had a really good conversation with the Transportation Department. They've got some really great ideas, so we're going to pull together everybody's minds here in the next probably 30 to 60 days and try to make it better for everybody next year.
And the Transportation Department is CCTS, Cabarrus County Transit System.
Correct.
Okay. And one thing that, that you touched on a little bit that I think is important to talk about is, all of the, all of one grade comes out there on different days for education, and I don't know which the grade is, but it's all the children from that grade in the school.
Sixth grade. Yeah, Cooperative Extension does a great job with that agribusiness school days. It's a wonderful program, and actually, Mount Pleasant High School actually comes out one day their physics class and does some things with some of the rides. So we're looking into doing some more with some of the local schools, maybe even a junior fairboard program, also involving some of the local colleges where they could come out, and our volunteers would now become fair ambassadors, those who have been a volunteer for more than five years, and teach some of the college students and high schoolers everything that they do, so we can get some fresh faces out there.
Good.
Another thing, I know that you use some different groups, bands and, bands and, I don't know, there's a whole bunch of them, athletic current teams and things, groups come out and help with picking up trash and different activities, so that we are making a contribution back to those nonprofits.
It's a really great fundraiser for them.
It's a good fundraiser for a number of them. And do you keep tracks, and you mentioned the sixth graders, that's what I was going to ask about, do you keep track of the, how many sixth graders come through, or how many of those school students come through?
We, we do. Well, we have it, but 4H and Cooperative Extension, they pull all of that together and send it to us when it's over. Hopefully, we can get a little bit more involved in that in the future, but they did a great job this year, one of their best years, I believe.
They're not included in this 88,000 number.
They are not.
So there is also another section of all those sixth graders that come in, and the high schoolers, so I don't know how much more you could add, but you would add.
Yeah, well over 1,000, probably.
Almost 3,000.
Almost 3,000, that you would add to that number. So we really had over 90,000 that showed up, so I'd say, that's pretty cool.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
We have a new fair coordinator who came, Angela Blatt.
Angela, will you please come up so we can?
Angela's on her second week at the fair.
Angela, you'll be doing what out of the fair?
I'm actually going to be assisting and helping coordinating all of the activities that our new fair manager will be handling. I'll be her right and left arm.
Angela's actually going to spearhead some of the junior fairboard and some of the college programs to get some young faces out there. She is our fair and events coordinator.
Well, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, one of the last, the Food Policy Council is out there, too. I loved going to that booth daily to see who was out there, what they were cooking, and what they had to say with the Food Policy Council, so I think they've already left tonight, but I think they had a good exhibit.
Next matter we have is G4, page 342. This is the communications and outreach, the presentation and results of the fall 2010 Citizen Survey. I call on Mrs. Hawkins for the presentation.
I'm Cabarrus County contracted with ETC Institute to conduct a citizen survey this past fall. Traditionally, the county holds or conducts these surveys every two years, so the last survey was in 2008, and this survey took place this fall. ETC Institute is going to, Karen Falk is with us, and she's going to share some information that was gathered through that survey, largely looking at satisfaction with county services. A couple of things that were different this year, this is the first time that we've contracted with ETC Institute, and one of the things that they brought to the table was to be able to provide national benchmarks as well as regional benchmarks, so we can kind of see how we compare to our peers across the country, as well as in the southeast region of the state. In addition, this year, we also have expanded in the past, the survey went mostly, or it did go only to those who have the landline telephones. Technology has changed a lot. This year, we also expanded that to mobile phones, and we also had the option to fill that in and mail it in as well. So that allowed us to increase the demographics, get a better sample from different demographic groups. And I'm just going to pull up this presentation for Karen. Here it is. Thank you. This is Karen Falk.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, the Board of Commissioners, I'm delighted to be here. I'm here for Chris Tatham tonight, but I'm here to tell you about the results for your survey, and I have the easy job tonight. Your results are really very good. I've got a few things to tell you that might need some attention, but the results really are very good. ETC Institute, just to, just to fill you, and we've done well over a million surveys in 425 cities and counties in 46 states. I would like to point out that where you see North Carolina, there are a lot of little dots, and we are delighted to have surveyed many communities in the state of North Carolina. So my agenda tonight is talk to you a little bit about the purpose of the survey, review with you just why we do the survey, the methodology or how the survey was done, the major findings, the conclusions, and I'm happy to answer any questions for you. The purpose of the survey, first of all, is to objectively assess resident satisfaction with the delivery of county services, and this is, this really means that we want to hear from that silent majority that is not going to come to this room, but they definitely have an opinion, you do make decisions for them, and by the way this survey is distributed, we know we've heard from them. And then secondly, to measure the trends from 2008, 2010. It's very tough to change what you cannot measure, and this is an excellent way to measure your progress in certain areas. Gathering input from residents to help set priorities. I know you deal with priorities all the time, and your residents also have opinions about how priorities might go, and this is a, we actually call this the low-hanging fruit piece. This is a piece where you know what it is that your residents would like to see next. And then lastly, we're able to compare your results to the nation and also to this region, which is going to be very helpful for you to see how you compare. So the methodology is how the survey was conducted, and we did ask many of the same questions that we asked in 2008, but your staff reviewed the questions that were asked, and anything that was new and current that should be on that survey was added. The method of administration was by mail and by phone, and it was done to a randomly, and that's a very important word, randomly selected sample of households. It was conducted in both English and Spanish. The goal was to complete 400 surveys. We actually completed 482. The sample did include households with landlines and cellphones, and each survey took approximately 15 minutes. Now, this piece, the confidence level was 95%. The margin of error was plus or minus 4.6%. That's the statistical piece that tells us that practically, it means that if we had done this survey 100 times over the county with a different random sample, 95% of the time, the results are going to come back within that margin of error. So I'm going to tell you about 482 households tonight, but this really is a picture of your entire county. Then we're going to take a look at benchmarking, which I think will be very helpful for you. I'm not sure that you've seen that before. And then lastly, we geocoded the results, so you can be able to see on a map the responses to many of the questions. So quickly, on the demographics, years lived in Cabarrus County, you've got a fourth of the people who've lived here 20, I'm sorry, five years or less, another fourth that's lived here 31 years or more. For any managing commission, that's, that is, that could be a real challenge, because the expectations of those two groups are really quite different. And so our demographic, race, and ethnicity representation is good, ages of household occupants is good, household income is good, and gender is good. This is the scatter map. This tells us where the survey responses came from. When we send out that sample, we know that we've covered the entire area, and we hope that it will be coming back in the distribution that's appropriate to cover the county, and I think you'll agree that it does cover the county. There are clusters of dots in places where the density of population is greater, and that's to be expected. So we like to give you the bottom line upfront. Cabarrus County is moving in the right direction, and I'm going to show you proof of that tonight. The county is setting the standard for service delivery in many areas, and over the next two years, the direction for the county should be to sustain the high levels of performance that you're already doing. So major finding number one, residents generally have a positive perception about the county. This is the first of what is a graph that I want to explain just a little bit about how it's structured, so I won't spend a lot of time on the next ones, but you'll have a complete understanding of how this is done. Very satisfied or the most positive is the darker blue. The lighter blue is satisfied, and the white color is a neutral, which is just an okay response. And if there are negative responses, there are the dissatisfieds, and they're in the red color. Essentially, we see a lot of blue on this graph. It's, it couldn't be any better, really. The results are very satisfied and satisfied with almost everything that's on here, especially as a place to live, as a place to raise children, which I think is one of the nicest compliments that any community can get. The feeling of safety in the county parks is really good. There's one at the very bottom, the value received for your tax dollars and fees, and I just want you to know that that generally is on the lower end of this graph. But that comes up in just a little bit when we compare it to the nation and to your region, and it's actually, you actually are doing very well comparatively. Overall satisfaction with various aspects of living in Cabarrus County, emergency fire response is good, emergency medical response, emergency law enforcement response. And when we, another way of looking at this information is to look at the positives in a ratio to the negatives, and everything here is in a two-to-one ratio, which is very positive, except for that last one, employment opportunities, and do not feel lonely here, this is something that we see around the country right now. Satisfaction with various Cabarrus County programs and services, obviously, a lot of blue again on this chart, a very, very positive, two-to-one ratios in every category. Major findings, too, the overall satisfaction with county services is generally the same throughout the county, and this is where these geocoded maps come in. The way that geocoding is done is with each one of those dots, that, that ends up in a zip code, and whatever the mean response is to any one question determines what color that zip code gets. So, they're the same colors as we're on that chart, so if it's a dark blue, it's very satisfied, if it's a light blue, it's satisfied. Neutral is gonna be represented as yellow here, and dissatisfied, which you don't have any of here, so I'll show you. This is the overall quality of county services, so across the county, it's satisfying. Emergency medical response, there's a very satisfied group here with the dark blue, and every, every other area is satisfied. Actually, I'm gonna back up just a minute, let me tell you that overall quality of county services, you, you may remember that there was a little bit of dissatisfied on the graph. It was a small percent, but it's not showing on the map because it's not in one area. So, again, we're dealing with mean responses, so, there's a little dissatisfaction here, but it's scattered throughout the county, not enough in one area to show. Emergency law enforcement response, if you are involved in any one of these particular issues, you may have a feel for why there's one area that's darker, darker blue and one area that's blue, lighter blue, but at this point, it's just all positive here. Emergency fire response is all very satisfied. Library services, emergency preparedness, interesting that this corner has, is more satisfied than the other, you may have a, have a thought about that. Recreation leagues and classes, upper left-hand corner of the, of the county, and that's also where parks are, so that's, it's probably consistent there. Curbside recycling, there's a little area of neutral, which is just okay, it's not positive or negative, you may also have a feeling for why that is. Stormwater management, animal control services. Major findings, number three, satisfaction with most county services has increased while the national average has decreased, and here's where you're, you'll see where you really have a good standing. So, the first thing we do is take a look at a composite satisfaction index, it's done, it's done in a way that your results in 2008 were equaling one hundred, we took them to equal one hundred, and then, any change is how the index is handled. So, first, we see that in, in 2008, your results were totaled to one hundred, your change is one point five, so it's increased. By comparison, the US average in 2008, if we let it equal one hundred, that result has dropped to ninety-four, and the Atlanta, mid-Atlanta region, mid-Atlantic region has also dropped to ninety-six, and that's the region we have you in. Overall satisfaction with various aspects of living in the county, we compare your 2008 and 2010 results, and we are, we were able to convert your 2008 survey results to compare to the ones that we have this year, and we've put these in a mean because it was on a slightly different scale, but essentially, nine out of thirteen major areas you've enjoyed increases in. That's, that's really phenomenal. When you see these arrows, it refers to a significant increase, and significant is a word that we choose to, to use if you're above or below that margin of error. When it comes to means, your margin of error is point one eight four, but if it's above or below that, it's a significant change, and you, these blue arrows are, are areas of significant change. You've got a red arrow, it's the employment opportunities one, but actually, that's the only one. Satisfaction with various county programs and services, again, we have eleven out of seven, I'm sorry, fourteen out of seventeen of your areas enjoyed an increase, and of those, we see the blue arrows in the areas that had the most significant increase. Major finding four, satisfaction in the county is, satisfaction levels in the county are higher than the national average.
I'm sorry, can you go back two slides to three, there you go. Was there an opportunity, or is there an opportunity, whether you can answer or Mrs. Hawkins can answer it, that as it relates to any of these, that, well, these aren't any blue arrow, or any red arrows going down, but for citizens to comment about if there was a particular service that was, that needs to be looked at or needs to be addressed, in their opinion, was there a way for the respondents to respond to that, or could they be directed to our website and say, here, how about letting us know what, what services are, are a concern for you?
A couple of things, did we ask a qualitative question on the survey, did we ask for comments on?
On a few of these, but not many.
Okay. So, so the answer is, we can do that at some point, we apparently didn't do too many this time, but the other option is, put your results on the website.
Right.
And then invite comments, and you will, you will get some feedback there.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sure. The general perception of the community, and this is Cabarrus County versus the US. And again, we see positive responses here, your numbers over the US numbers, and where the blue arrow is, you've got a significantly positive rating compared to the US. It's, it, it really is an outstanding piece of information for you.
If you were to call, if you called somebody, and they said they didn't want to participate, or however you want, they did not answer.
Sure, right.
How did you rate that, that, did you just say, no response? Did you figure it out somehow in here if they made some comment that was not pleasant?
You know, generally, what happens, and we sample approximately three times what we actually need, we know we're gonna get that response because we've, we know we're gonna get about that response. People have an opportunity to fill it out by mail, those who were part of the, the selected sample. They also have the opportunity to do it by phone if that's what they prefer, and we call that, we try to avoid non-response bias for one form or another. If people don't want to respond, that's totally fine, we expect that many won't. It doesn't really mean anything to the overall results, because we took a close look at the demographics, and that's part of everything that we do, we know that your, your community's represented, so, those people who did not respond just missed an opportunity, but it's, your, your results are measured by your demographics.
Thank you.
How residents rate the community of Cabarrus County versus the US as a place to live, and, you know, you just have an abundance of blue arrows, as a place to raise children, as a place to retire, as a place to work, all of those are very positive, well up above the US. Perceptions of safety, feeling of safety in county parks is up, feeling of safety in the neighborhoods at night, and neighborhoods during the day, for some reason, it is up a little, but it's not up significantly. Satisfaction with county programs and services, again, you're well up, with all of the blue arrows, you're well up significantly over the US. Satisfaction with communication, and I want to talk about that issue in general first before we talk about your results, but communication has an awful lot to do with how your residents feel about certain services. If there are things happening that they don't know about, they may be less inclined to, to respond either satisfactorily or dissatisfactorily, they may be inclined to say neutral if they don't know about it. So, that area is really very important to, to focus on. You have especially high marks in availability of information about programs and services, that's good. The county efforts to keep residents informed is up. On one of your earlier graphs, in general, that was not a highly rated one, but you are clearly way up above in the US. Satisfaction with customer service, accuracy of information and assistance given, customer service is one of those things that you, you really hope you rate highly, and then you, and you did. So, people who come to the county for assistance with something, the rates are, the, the ratings are really very high. Major finding number five, priorities for the future. The county issues that residents felt were most important, and we ask these on all the major issues, you'll see here, the employment opportunities were number one, you would expect that it would be, it was at the bottom of your satisfaction chart, but the other interesting thing is the emergency law enforcement response, people were actually very satisfied with, but it remains very important. So, if people are dissatisfied with something, you would assume they think it's very important, but it doesn't always work that way, and because it doesn't, we go to great lengths to figure out which ones for you are the ones that you really need to address. We have two instruments that do that, I'll show you in general what they are, and they really are able to, to bring that information to you very clearly. This is called a matrix, the very, the lower half of this matrix is higher in importance, the upper half of the matrix is lower in importance, the left side is higher in satisfaction, the right side is lower in satisfaction. That means that that lower right quadrant is the place where people are less likely to be satisfied, and it's very important. So, whatever ends up in that quadrant is the piece that you should focus on, and you have employment opportunities down there, which you would expect from the numbers. Now, here's the second piece, same information, I actually prefer this one because I think it's just a little simpler to, to see. We have three possible major categories, very high priority, high priority, and medium priority, and if something ends up in the very high or high priority, it is something that you should consider addressing. That means that it's a combination of not being satisfied, and it's very important. If something falls in the medium priority category, it's not urgent, you're doing a good job with that, but it's still helpful to see what priority those issues are in for your residents. So, employment opportunities is the, is the one that falls in the high priority. And then, county services and programs residents felt were most important for the, for the county to provide, emergency preparedness, parks, library services, curbside recycling. The interesting thing about this one is that we have a whole bunch of things in this lower right quadrant, but the other thing is that they are in the medium priority category, and I think that means that relatively speaking, they were the ones that surfaced as the ones that were close to being necessary, needing some kind of attention, but in general, they're really in the medium priority, so nothing is very urgent here. Usually, that means that you're doing a good job of providing those services. Other priority that residents feel community leaders should place on various county issues, and the rating here is very high, high, medium, or low. Protecting water quality and the environment, the county is prepared for emergency and natural disasters. The county has adequate and affordable landfill spaces, are at the top of your list. Then, other findings, communication, we talked about that a little bit ago, you've actually made some major improvement here, so in 2008, those who thought they were very informed was a fairly small number, and you've grown to fourteen percent for this year, and the positives in general have increased. As sources residents use to obtain information about Cabarrus County programs and services, newspapers number one, television's number two, word of mouth is number three, and word of mouth is a, that tells me that you're a tightly knit community. I'm, I'm working with Henderson, Nevada, I just put their report together last week. Word of mouth isn't on their list of communication because it's, you know, it's, it's not as tightly woven nearly as this county, and you're a much bigger area, but this will help you with communication, know which of those, which of those means of communication are, are working. Overall satisfaction with communication, the county's website is doing pretty well, the availability of information about programs and services, county efforts to keep residents informed, and the level of public involvement in decision-making is a little bit lower. Sustainability, it was very interesting to hear the earlier presentation about sustainability, and you have a few questions on here that I've not seen asked before. Are you familiar with the county's sustainability programs? And twenty-eight percent were, and I, I think that's actually pretty amazing. We, we're beginning to ask more and more sustainability questions, but you are obviously leading the pack with that issue. Do you think it's important for Cabarrus County to support sustainability programs? Ninety, ninety percent said yes. How supportive are you of the county's efforts to encourage more consumption of local food? I've never seen that question asked, but, you know, with, it's, it's interesting with the presentation tonight that that's very important for you, and that's great, it's very supported by your community. Funding sources for new school construction. Support for al, alternative funding sources for new school construction. And I'm gonna start with sales taxes here. When we have this information represented like this, we can tell you that you can count on the very supportive number, that's twenty-eight percent for sales tax. When it comes to supportive, somewhat supportive, which is the next category, we can suggest that you can probably count on half of that number. So, that leaves you with maybe thirty-eight percent, and I'm presuming that you need a simple majority to provide any kind of funding changes, so, that issue is not ready for your voters, and property taxes, not either. So, in summary, Cabarrus County is definitely moving in the right direction, you've got some wonderful results here. The county is setting the standard for service delivery in many areas, you should feel very good about that. Over the next two years, the county should sustain the high levels of performance in areas that were most important to residents, and I'll just remind you that you had many fall in the medium priority category, you're already sustaining high service for those categories. And then, the results of this survey will provide a benchmark for future performances, and once again, encourage you to think in terms of measuring what it is you do now, making sure that that's still working in your community. With that, I'm very happy to take any other questions.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, just one thing I saw there, kind of jumped out at me, was the, the, you talking about how important, we're a close-knit community, word of mouth is an important way that we share information, but then, looking at the demographics where, you know, half of the county residents have lived here, you know, looks like for less than ten, well, what, less than twenty years, is that rare to see that kind of breakout, because it appears to me that people are getting assimilated pretty quickly into the community, you know, and getting involved, and there's ways for them to get involved.
That kind of breakout is not unusual, it's just that you had kind of polarized a quarter percent, or twenty, twenty-five percent that was, had been here, less than five years, and the thirty-one percent, thirty-one and over had been here. I, I, I suggest that it just means that your, your community is really very tightly woven, that people feel comfortable here early on. In any other community, that would be sort of a diverse spread, but this is, that was one suggestion alone that says that the word of mouth is something that's very effective in your community.
Okay.
When you do a survey like this, because you're calling all over the county, I would presume that some of the responses, for example, about water, the availability of water, we as a county don't provide water services, so, there's, you know, when you're asking these questions, I, I would presume that at the beginning, you're saying that this is being done by the county, so that people know that, but I also would think that, you know, if you live in one of the municipalities, then when you answer it, if you're thinking of, use another one, curbside recycling, if your community didn't offer curbside recycling, then you're gonna think about the municipality, not necessarily the county, so it looks at the county as a whole, but that's not just what Cabarrus County is doing, it's also what the municipalities are doing, is what's reflected in these answers, because if, if I wasn't sitting in this seat, I think there'd be a number of services that I would think, well, I get this, so, therefore, I would answer positively, but it might be something provided by the city, I live in the city limits of Concord, versus something that's provided by the county. So, it is a perspective of the entire county, I'm just making that general statement for anybody that's listening on TV tonight, that it does look at the everybody, not just what Cabarrus County government is doing, to some degree.
Yes, that's true, and the other thing that you will probably want to know is if the- And the other thing that you will probably want to know is if there are areas that you are not responsible for, but people are unsatisfied, dissatisfied with those particular areas, you would probably like to know that, so.
The other thing I thought was extremely interesting was the opportunities for improvement. And I know that we've been, we're supposedly no longer in a recession, but that's a statistical number. I don't believe people really feel that way. But employment continues to be an issue, which it is for the entire nation, and that this board is, is, you know, looking at what can we do to help stimulate the local economy? So I think that's interesting that without having the results of this survey, we've already, we already knew that, and we're already trying to address it. So I think that was, that was very interesting, and we're not the only ones addressing it. But I thought that was, that was pretty interesting, that that is always a, or still a big item for the people in our county to find good employment opportunities.
Right, it is. And we have kind of a unique perspective because we do this kind of service for cities and counties all over the country. So that's all I can tell you. Indeed, it is not, it is not something that you should feel lonely about. It's happening everywhere, so.
I think this is great. Mrs. Hawkins, are we putting this on the website? So that, you know, other than tonight, everybody can see?
Yes, we will. And that's a wonderful suggestion to allow comments on that as well, and we will do that. Also, to follow up on the question that you asked Commissioner Poole about the different services, yes, a lot of those categories, municipalities also provide similar services. And that's, the geocoding is one really important area where you can kind of determine, oh, that's, you know, you can kind of see where the responses are. So it's going to help us determine if it's really an issue for us, or if it's a different issue for another jurisdiction as well. So another thing I would state, just for the survey in general, is it's kind of a starting point for what we need to look at. It's not going to answer every question. It's what, 15 minutes in length? It's not going to answer every question, but if there are issues here that you see, and you have all the data related to this as well, not just the PowerPoint that you can kind of sort through. So if there are other things that you would like to look at in more detail, then we can research that further, either through departments or other means as well, so.
I would also hope that we will share this with, when you meet with the county, the city managers and the other elected boards. I think they would probably be interested, because you can see geographically certain areas of the county. And there's some of them, when you show those maps, you know, I think all of us go, oh, yeah, we understand why that area was a lighter blue, and maybe that area was a darker blue or whatever, you know, because, I mean, I'm in that more than 31-year category, haven't lived here all my life. So it's kind of, you know, for some of them, it's easy to understand why they're like they are. But I think it would be, because it does cover what municipalities are offering, I think that it would be important for us to make the effort to make sure their managers have it, so that they can share it with their other elected bodies and look over the information also, so. But I think it's great. It's a good report.
One thing I'd like, any other comments? One thing I would like, I think it's important to, for all of us to know on this side of the table, is that four years ago, we adopted a mission and vision statement. And the vision statement that we adopted is, our vision for Cabarrus is a county where our children learn, our citizens participate, our dreams matter, our families and neighbors thrive, and our community prospers. And the mission statement is through visionary leadership and good stewardship, we will ensure public safety, administer state requirements, determine county needs, and provide services to continually enhance quality of life. One of the things that we took on four years ago is not only to come up with a mission and vision statement, but also goals. And we set goals of one year, we set goals of two years, and then three to five years, or two to three years, and then five years. And each year at our retreat, we review our goals to see how, have we achieved that goal? Why haven't we achieved if we not? What are, what is our plan of action? And I think that that effort that we've done in past boards, and I think that we will continue to do, is bearing out here, is that it's my, what I try and do is, if you're not constantly looking at something and critically analyzing, how can we do it better? You're going to lag. And I think it's very important for this board to keep sight of the fact that we need to always look at our mission and vision and our goals, and keep on looking at them to see what we can do to do better. Because, you know, what is it, if you're, don't look over your shoulder because somebody may be gaining. You know, you've got to keep looking forward, you've got to keep looking, figuring out how you're going to do things better. Thank you for the report. I think it's very informative. I think it's important for us to look back at our, look at our retreat coming up and reassess our mission and vision, if that, is that what these five members want to continue with, or to change, tweak, as well as the goals? Because it's important to have goals and try to achieve them, and understand where we are in the goal-setting process and the goal-achieving process. So thank you very much. Any other comments?
I have a couple of questions. Is this the second time this survey's been done? Is that, or many?
The first survey was in 2006, so this is actually our third citizen survey.
Okay, so it's done every two years?
I'm sorry, 2004, this is our third citizen survey.
Okay, is that every two years?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. And I would like to know what the, I guess, the demographics of what constitutes a household. They were to contact me, you know, me being single, not having a family, is that constitute a household versus, okay, I'd like to see a breakdown of that, whenever, you know, the next survey of what, what constitutes the households in Cabarrus County? Just as simple, if that could be done.
What's the number in the household?
Yeah, just a number, or children, or, you know.
Actually, we did, we did a, we did an ages piece.
Okay.
That might lend itself to that.
Yeah.
But essentially, a household in there generally are about two-thirds of your county population is the approximate number of households here.
Right, I mean, just like the breakdown of the household, yeah.
Additionally, the new census data, parts of it have been released, and that's, would probably be the best data available for that, and we'll share that with you when we have it.
Commissioner Meesmer, I'm sorry, going back to your question, if you look at page 528, it talks about what the demographics are that's requested. I don't know if that will, this doesn't, this just shows you what you would respond in responding to it, and who knows how those responses are, and I think that's what you're asking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing too, I wanted to point out, and I'm not, this is not seeing the 2004 survey that was done. You go back even further, in Chairman White, in looking at 2004, and, you know, what's amazing is, I looked at the slide here, the county issues that residents felt were most important, and probably 2004, the pace of growth, open space preservation were some of the highest. And I think that shows the work that we've done in the last, I know that the housing market has pretty much, I would like a better term, collapsed the last two years, but, you know, the fact that that's down now, and people don't see that as that important anymore, shows that we've taken, I think, some positive steps, you know, over the last five years to bring, you know, our growth rate and help to manage that better, so that we're not, you know, that people are comfortable now that that is under control.
Any other comments, questions, Commissioner?
Okay, thank you very much.
You also, just to address Mr. Creese, if you want to look at our past surveys, they are on the water cooler as well.
Oh, are they? Okay.
Look at those. So that will, there are a number of categories that have changed dramatically, but some of that is just a result of the economy too, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Next that we have is, let me see here, I think that takes care of our new business. Or, excuse me, yes, new business. Now, under H1 is the appointments, Department of Agent and Advisory Board.
I move we appoint Virginia Walker to the Department of Agent Advisory Board for a three-year term ending December 31, 2013.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next is the appointment to the Fireman's Relief Fund trustees.
I move that we appoint Matthew Petzel from Allen Fire Department, Richard Earnhardt, Kathy, Richard Earnhardt from Northeast Fire Department, and Erlene Cox from Reimer, and reappoint Raymond Blackwold or Ken Nichol, Raymond Blackwold from Coldwater, Ken Nicholson from Flowstore, Ben Mayberry Senior from Jackson Park, Clyde Cuntz from Midland, Rick Burleyson from Mount Pleasant, Richard Bergeron the second one, second from Northeast, Dan Brown Hodel and William Simons to, from Reimer, to the terms shown here, either field expiring or complete term, ending December, January 31, 2012, or 213, according to what it shows in our.
We have a motion for appointments and reappointments as named. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. The next that we have is reports, and this is the EDC quarterly update for the period of October through December 2010. And I will turn it over to Mr. Cox to call up whom he feels is appropriate to assist in his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the council, manager day, Mr. Cook, and young lady at the end. Thank you for the opportunity to be here. The results of that survey are incredible. Congratulations. That's a lot of hard work and a lot of good leadership, so thank you very much. If you put that on YouTube, we might actually play that at a chamber board meeting. I think that's an important group to get that kind of information out to. And it's great to live and work in a community where so many people are overwhelmingly positive about the place they live. In fact, as I listened to her go down the list of all, all the good things, I thought there's surely a way to turn that into a marketing tool for us when we're talking to companies that may want to come here, and they want to know about the community and the environment where they live, and, and I think all those things play right into their hands. And we're also grateful for the opportunity we have to work in the area that's the weakest, that's in the area of unemployment. You know, the sad fact is that 20 out of the last 22 months, our unemployment number has been in double digits. And it doesn't give us any, any good feeling or sense of accomplishment to know that we're the second lowest unemployment number in the region. Everybody else, except for Union County, over those same 22 months, has been higher than us. So it is very difficult. One of the good things is Charlotte is doing a terrific job recruiting some very large companies. And I think the good news for us is that many of those folks are choosing to live in Cabarrus County, whether it's the issue of, you know, better management, or better quality of life, or lower taxes, or better schools, better school scores, whatever those things are. So that's good, but we know that we've got to create jobs locally. The information early in the book is the latest information, both from the state and from the federal government. We simply present that to you. It is not anecdotal, it is actually factual, and if it's something that you wanted to read at your leisure, then you could do it. It'd give you a good, firm perspective. The page where I would begin is economic indicators. We've kind of given you a picture of 2009 and 2010 to show you with respect to permitted new investment. And you'll see 2009 in the red ink and 2010 in blue. Not surprisingly, 2010, there was much less new capital investment in Cabarrus County. Again, a reflection, we think, of the economy. A couple of the spikes of notice would be in May of 2009. That investment reflects Hendrick investing $3 million, Hendrick Automotive investing $2.6 million, and the North Carolina Research Campus investing 16.6. These numbers come from the county permit office, so we want to give you, you know, numbers that, that are consistent across the board. And in November of 2010, the difference there, or the spike there, is related to Celgarde at $6 million, their initial investment, CMC Northeast at $10.6 million, and Dyna Pond, they're doing an expansion there at $2 million. So Celgarde, an expansion from Charlotte, CMC Northeast, an existing company that's been here for 80 years, and Dyna Pond, one of the foreign companies that has invested and expanded in Cabarrus County. I think this is the third time in the last 10 years in creating new jobs. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank you all for the work that you do in supporting, recruiting new companies, especially through the use of the incentives, and Dyna Pond is certainly all of the, well, Celgarde and Dyna Pond, both are good examples of that. So thank you for your support. You also see employment numbers in 2009. Clearly, we had less people in our workforce, again, a function of the economy. In 2010, we had more people involved in our workforce, and I don't even have an anecdotal reason why, because the key industries like housing have not come back. And we've seen other plant closures, but we have more folks in our workforce in 2010 than we did in 2009. That may be a good barometer for what's going to take place in housing in 2011. You'll see the unemployment rate, the next page, 2009 and 2010, and we've compared our unemployment rate also to Mecklenburg County. We thought we'd do it for the entire region, but we just, in terms of net actual unemployment, we compare so favorably or almost evenly with Mecklenburg County. You'll see the unemployment rate, as I mentioned earlier, where it's hovered for the last two years. And you'll also see gross retail sales. It may not translate yet into new tax dollars for the county, but based on numbers through November, the last reporting period, gross retail sales in Cabarrus County are up.
I'm sorry, stay on that page if you don't mind, Mr. Cox. Is when you said the unemployment rate, that is Cabarrus County? That is?
That's correct.
Okay. That's what I thought, I was going to make sure.
Yes, that long, slow march up and over the 10% line, and a little bit back down, a little bit back up.
Thank you.
And, you know, we, we understand that if you're the last person in the county that doesn't have a job, then the unemployment rate is not solved for you. And so that's an opportunity that we all have to try to help our neighbors, friends, family to find good jobs. And then the last chart that we provided for you there is with respect to housing permits, going back to a peak year, 2006, and then seeing where we were in 2010. Then we've just given you some staff activity spread across the four of us, and I think at this point, then I'll tag off to Ryan, and he'll give you a prospect report.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to walk you through the project summary, as well as some of our activities in the past, in the fourth quarter of 2010. What you're seeing on the prospect report, that's sort of a snapshot of where our prospect activity was on the 7th. We've actually had a few updates to those prospects that you see. We're actually, good news, our active projects are up to 45. One of these projects has been moved to the located file, and we've moved one to inactive. We have three, or four different designations. One, active being they're in the market, we've had communication with them, they've been on the ground here in Cabarrus County, or it's a project that's coming from a reliable source, either Department of Commerce or a regional partnership. Inactive means we've been working with them, but the project has either stopped, or is on pause, or is on hold, or we've lost communication with the company. Dropped means we've heard from the company themselves that the project is no longer valid, or they've relocated, the project went away, or simply there's no positive outcome of the project for the community. So we move those to drop. And then obviously, the best category for us is located. Once they have signed their lease, or a certificate of occupancy has been offered by the county, we'll move them over into the located file. So you can see, there's a variety of different industries, different sources, and we'll go in a little more detail. One of the things I did do, we're using this data now to help some of our developers in the community learn what are people looking for when they come to the area. So I've crunched a few numbers, and obviously, with some of our larger properties, our numbers are skewed sometimes, so we're going to pull those out and provide some different information. But one of the more interesting things, the most popular acreage requested from our office is around 38 to 40 acres. The most popular square foot is 215,000, and that's a little skewed because of some of the larger facilities that we have. Ceiling height is 21 feet, so we always encourage developers to go higher if possible. There is some added cost, but the more modern buildings are much easier for us to market. And as well, the average project that we see coming through our office employees, or has the possibility to employ 234 employees. Obviously, that can be skewed by projects with a small sample size of only 40 projects. Investment, $36 million. So our average project right now is pretty palatable, and the kind of project that everyone in the nation will be pretty excited to see. Obviously, those numbers will ebb and flow throughout the year and track up and down, but we're going to keep an eye on those. As you turn to our prospect report, you can see good news for 2010. The last three months in the year, we did see positive. The last three months in the year, we did see positive uptick in our active projects. That's been pretty consistent. Probably around mid-2010, we started to see a pretty rapid escalation of project activity. And that's continued on into the first quarter of 2011. Project types were always, you mentioned measurement. That's something we're always trying to tweak. You know, if it's manufacturing, then we need to drill down into the sector. So, we actually had that discussion in our office. We're going to pull out some of these and continue to tweak them. A call center, where does that fit? Is that office, or is that a standalone entity? That's some of the questions we're having internally, so we can report better data to our board and other elected committees. Project source, excuse me. You may notice consultant up there. That means, that doesn't mean a consultant is not involved with the project. There's zero. The consultant may be working with the Department of Commerce, or Regional Partnership, or a broker. And what we represent as project sources, who brings the project directly to us. So, there could be three parties involved. It could be Commerce, Partnership, and a broker. But it's whoever brings the project to us directly, that's who we list as the project source. So, sometimes, you'll deal with consultants, but the lead initially came through in a utility or something of that nature. International versus domestic mix. I ran the new numbers, and we're actually at 24% right now. So, we've seen a slight uptick. And that continues to be consistent with what we're seeing along the state and regional efforts. Mission, conventions, and other efforts report. You can see where the cage show, excuse me, in Europe. That was an event that we attended with the Department of Commerce. We did take a side trip to Italy to call on the headquarters of a company. They've actually just signed their lease here in Cabarrus County. So, that was a very fruitful trip. As you can see, the back end of the year gets quite busy with some of the automotive and motorsport shows. It's the off-season, so to speak, for the race team. So, they have a lot of their shows in the end of the year, as well as early January. Friends of Commerce, we also attended an event. And anytime we can travel with Commerce, it's a great opportunity to, A, to reach out, meet new consultants, new brokers in a new market, as well as travel with representatives from Commerce who bring us projects and make sure they're well aware of Cabarrus County. And the NBAA is an event we attended with Concord Regional Airport. We are going to attend another event, I think it's actually in February, with the airport. They are a huge driver for us, tremendous amount of investment. And each time a plane is based in Cabarrus County, it's free taxable property with no kids to educate. So, it's very good, very good for the county. So, we're obviously interested in boosting all efforts at the airport. Be glad to answer any questions when we wrap up. I'm going to hand it over to Anna Lou, she's going to give an update on the Cabarrus Roots program.
As you've requested, we've listed the local contacts and visits that we've made over the last quarter on this chart here. You can see it's a good mix of different companies who are located throughout Cabarrus County. The majority of these businesses didn't have any pressing issues or need immediate assistance. However, it was an opportunity for us to meet with them and build a long-term relationship and better understand their business and the needs they have and some of their expectations. Again, I would like to ask any of you to provide us with any referrals of small businesses that we could visit on your behalf in this coming up quarter. Moving on to the web report, on the last page, I just wanted to point out the top traffic sources. While the majority of folks searching for us find us directly, we are still getting 13% of our traffic visiting us through the Cabarrus Regional Chambers website, and 8% of visitors who are coming to our website after they visit a web ad on National Speedsport News website. That's a motorsports publication based in Harrisburg, and we advertised with them last year. So, we felt that was very good, that we were able to see how that ad provided us some return. Also, on the top webpage chart, again, the news articles in the business directory stand out. They continue to be the most popular. In fact, looking down the list, the majority, I think, it seems like a lot of job seekers are still coming to our website for assistance, in addition to the site consultants and the brokers who search us for information and resource. That's my report. I'd like to turn it back over to John at this time.
Thank you, Anna Lou. I think in the back of your booklet, there are a couple of presentations that we most recently have done at Mount Pleasant for the town commission there and mayor. And last night, we were at Harrisburg for the town council meeting. And as we always do, we've asked each of our municipalities when they would like for us to come, if in fact they would. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't, sometimes they have a committee that they would rather us present to. So, that process is underway. We're also reviewing the contract that we have with the county and looking at each of the issues, so that by the time our next report is here, we'll have a pretty good feel for each of the issues in the contract and how we're making progress on accomplishing those. As an example, in the current contract, there are a couple of issues related to the website and how we attract people to it, how we capture the informations there, how we fulfill or respond to their activity on our website. So, we're working with a local provider and looking toward, in fact, I think they're coming tomorrow to make a final presentation to us. So, we'll be doing that updating very soon. We're also looking at some other activities. John and I exchanged email or voicemail. We did a program a couple of years ago with Nation's Job, which is a national company that does this all over America. And the thing that they do is create, and we created it through our structure, an opportunity for all employers to list every single job that they have, so that anybody could go to that website. And if you were interested in a school position, or a county position, or a position at a car dealership, or whatever they were, and we provide it absolutely free of charge. It's expensive for us to do, but I think as we moved through it last time, and of course, it was prior to the huge collapse of the economy, more than 170,000 unique visits came to that site, and 69,000 resumes were uploaded to it, and some people were hired. A lot of people were thinking that the economy was cooling a little bit then, but they just wanted to acquire resumes, so that when it came back, they would have those resumes. Well, now, they're clearly out of date. So, we've been talking to the provider about the possibility, because of what our economy in particular has been through, whether or not they could significantly reduce the cost to us of that, so that we could do it again. And John, I'll continue those conversations. So, that would be our quarterly report, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have.
I just want to make a comment, because if you notice, on December 29th, there was a tour of Cabarrus County with me. So, I want to say, which you already knew from the tour, you know, for me personally, I tend to drive in the same parts of the county for the most part of me. You know, we have our routes that you tend to drive around and that you're familiar with. I used to pick on my husband a bunch, because he liked to go for Sunday drives. And when I was on a different elected board, and he would say, "Do you see those 100 acres?" And I'd go, "Yeah," because they were all wooded. And he'd say, "500 homes." And then, I got to where I didn't like going for Sunday drives anymore. So, I haven't done those for a while, but it was very interesting. It was a great, great day to drive around, to see some of the industries that we have. A lot of them I was very familiar with, but there were a few of them that I just hadn't turned down that road, that dead-end road, to find out what was there, in all honesty. And so, as I told you that day, and again, I want to tell you, I appreciated the tour. I thought it was very helpful for me to see what we've, some of the industries in the county that we have. I was interested in the certified sites, because that seems to be a focus for the EDC, and I wanted to see where those sites were located. And so, that was very helpful for that day. And again, I thought it was a good day. And Ryan did a good job of driving. He didn't scare me at all. So, that was also a good thing. But thank you again for showing me around the county.
And we're happy to do that for any of you at any time. Just let us know when. Commissioner Cruz?
No, just one question in the report. I was listening today, and I understand that in conjunction with the President of China coming to the States, that I guess there's going to be a delegation from China that's going to be, the States taking out to the Research Triangle Park. Is there any mention at all bringing them anywhere else in the state? Or I was thinking, hoping to hear the Research Campus would be on that, you know, tour.
I think the answer to the question is no, not this trip. I do think, as we've talked to you before, we think that international travel is very important, and that our connectivity to the Charlotte Regional Partnership and to the North Carolina Department of Commerce and trips that we would make on our own on behalf of Cabarrus County will continue to be very important. This year, I would say that we've scaled back some of that travel. We'd actually anticipated being in India this month or the first part of next month, and we passed on that trip. But the interesting thing about RTP, in this case RTP, is many folks have made that trip to China, and in a sense, it's almost reverse trade mission. You build that relationship over a long period of time. So, we think international business is going to continue to be a growth industry for the future.
Any other questions? Couple of questions, Mr. Cox. On the missions and conventions report, a lot of them, let's see, there was one, two, six of them, and that's listed, six that are listed from October to December, and half of them were motorsports. Is there other area, I know that we are known for motorsports, is there other things that y'all are trying to move out into, maybe to be on the cusp of the next revolution, whatever that may be, as it relates to manufacturing?
I think, in particular, those three just happen to be clustered at year's end. The IMA show in Indianapolis is actually kind of a spinoff of PRI, which used to be in Indianapolis and moved to Orlando. And then, people in Indianapolis said, "Hey, we still need to have one." So, it's presented a little bit of a dilemma for folks like us who recruit in the motorsports industry. We feel like we have to be at both of them. I guess the third one was SEMA. It's the Automotive Aftermarket Show. And it's in, I guess it's in November, right around that time. They just happen to fall in that part of the year. I think you'll see, in particular, Ryan's travels over the course of the entire year in the areas of biotechnology, advanced manufacturing, and the other targets and clusters that you're aware of, those just happen to be in this quarter.
Okay. In looking through, and I don't remember what, who referenced the report, it was LEMAC. What is LEMAC?
It's a project you're familiar with.
Okay, so that's, okay. I'm just trying, when I get acronyms or letters, I'm trying to figure out what it is.
And as Ryan said a little bit earlier, you know, projects come and go and do a lot of weird things, unusual things in between. And this is one, I think Deputy Manager Downs had a conversation with the project this week, as we did. Sometimes, we talk to this particular project every single day. Sometimes, it's three times a day, and the first call will be, "I'm not coming." Second call will be, "I'm rethinking that." And third call will be, you know.
One of, is Access to Capital Event. What is the purpose of, what is Access to Capital Event?
We're working together with RCCC in collaboration to do a program for entrepreneurs and small businesses who are interested in gaining access to capital for their business.
Okay. The other is, you talked about quite a bit of, well, not quite a bit, but there was some discussion about some expansions. When is the groundwork laid to discuss with those businesses that, as you're looking at five years, 10 years, not knowing what their expansion is, they don't expand out of where they are? Or they don't get landlocked for their, for future expansions? How do you deal with that?
You know, I don't know that I know the best answer to it. I know the way that we typically find out about it, if they're domestically-based companies, we generally find out through an industry visit, or if we're taking one of them to dinner. The Saddle Creek Expansion, we actually first discussed at the, in an airport in Orlando. They didn't know we were going to be flying through there. We didn't know they were going to be flying through. We both had time to sit down and talk, and they said, "You know, we're kind of sketching out plans now for an expansion. Here's what it looks like." So, that got the ball rolling on our end. By and large, the international expansions you usually hear about if you're visiting their corporate headquarters overseas, especially the Japanese projects. We're working with a company now, you're probably very familiar with. It's probably landlocked and needs to find additional space, not only in Cabarrus County, but probably from a national standpoint as well, with respect to some distribution. I think a lot of it comes from just building the relationship, having the trust, and them being willing to say, I mean, we'll ask all the usual questions about taxation, and crime, and education, and whatever. And over time, they just get comfortable, or not, and say, "You know, we're thinking about..." And that's kind of how it goes. It's not very scientific.
How many certified sites do we have here? Well, let me back up. When I say certified sites, I'm talking about one plot as being a site. So, one site may be 15 acres, another site may be five acres.
I want to, we've sent all that information to Commissioner Poole, so I'm just going off the top of my head, and I'll look at Ryan. I want to say two in the International Business Park, certified by Commerce, and then a site-ready site, certified, certified, certified by Duke Energy. And that's a little bit different. And keep in mind that Commerce, two years ago, changed the rules on what an actual certified site was, so we've played a little bit of catch-up. The thing about certified sites, it's kind of like incentives. If nobody did them, then nobody would have to do them. But if counties get their site certified, and you don't have any, then you're at a disadvantage.
So, we have two Commerce certified sites?
And one certified by the Duke Readiness Program, which is, you know, very close.
How is that in comparison to, you know, our neighbors?
You know, we looked at that a few years ago, haven't looked at it recently. When we did look at it, and you speak to it specifically?
Yeah, I actually looked at that just the other day. It's great timing. We are ahead of the majority of the county since the region. Stanley County was pretty aggressive. Their former director approved probably four or five certified sites. If you look at where we are right now, we have the two that John mentioned, and we have one pending. It should, we expected approval this month, and we should get that approval in February. We have another one that we've initiated, Lot 7, 8, and 9, International Business Park. And we've initiated Lot 12, International Business Park. So, we're going to be one of the leaders in the state pretty soon. So, that's an initiative that we've realized with the Celgarde project as a great example, that there is a lot of value there. We're putting a lot of efforts in it. So, I'll get a map that'll show you in comparison to the other communities in the region, and we can turn that around tomorrow for you.
If you still have that, you could just share with everybody where you can send it again.
And in regards to the certified sites, if a developer or a landowner wants to have their site certified, they would contact you all?
Absolutely.
Okay. And it's, I mean, it's, you're not going to know where, you're not going to know a landowner that wants to certify unless they contact you. I mean, you may have an idea, let's try and get that one, and then you may start it, but...
It needs to be 10 acres or more. There needs to be one owner. It needs to be, I'm sorry, 10 acres or more, generally speaking, one owner, verified price per acre, ingress, egress, bunnies and, bugs and bunnies, the environmental, phase one or phase one. So, there are a lot of things that have to happen, but if it's 10 acres or more, give us a call. We'd love to take a look at it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, it's not a question, but I did want to mention something, if that's okay. You talked about, or you were asking about targeted industries, industry clusters, and earlier tonight, the county has recognized for its efforts in local food. And Monday, Monday, the 31st, the Charlotte chapter of the American Culinary Federation is having its annual Chef's Ball at the Embassy Suites. And if you go to their website and you look at the sponsors of that chapter, there are seven of them, and three of them are Cabarrus County Food Companies, Cisco, S&amp;D Coffee, and Pre-Jail. And we've got some more food companies that have located offices in Kannapolis at the Research Campus. And that's really becoming, I think, an emerging area that we can spend some time on.
That is not anybody's stomach.
I'll end with that.
But I think Pre-Jail represents one of the spinoff factors of recruiting new business. If they weren't here, they wouldn't be sponsoring that, and they wouldn't be doing other things that they've done in the community.
Well, thank you all very much. I appreciate it. It's a lot of hard work, and I appreciate you getting us the information.
Thank you for the opportunity. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that is all that we have for the agenda as is. We do have a closed session meeting to talk about. Am I missing anything, Mrs. Honeycutt?
Request for citizens to serve on boards and committees.
There's always a request, because we always have a need for citizens to serve. If you are interested in serving, if you'll please go to our website, www.cabarruscounty.us, and go to Boards of Commissioners, or Board of Commissioners, and then under Committees, you'll be able to track it there. There's also a form there, and if you are not able to access the internet, if you'll contact Mrs. Honeycutt at 920-2100 would get to her, and we can get you plugged into a board or a committee that suits your fancy.
Mr. Chairman, one thing to add to that, a very specific request, is that we have our veterinarian that's been on the APAC has stepped down, and so we do need a veterinarian in particular to serve on, that's willing to serve on the APAC, because we're about to go into, on that committee of discussing a PETA valuation matrix, which we will need the expertise, particularly of a veterinarian on that committee at that point. So I would just ask if there are veterinarians in the community that might be interested in serving.
Okay. Any other comments? Do we have a motion to go into closed session to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by the public body as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection A, subsection 4?
So would.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. After closed session, we will be closing our meeting. I wish everybody safe time, and we will see you later. We do have a retreat coming up at the end of this month, which is on the 28th and the 29th, and that's gonna be at Camp Spencer. If you'd like to come out, please join us.
I just want to say that I've had some people wonder about if it was open or not.
It is open.
It's an open meeting.
Come out and hear the discussions we're gonna have. Thank you all very much, and have a good evening.
We will need to recess after the closed session.
Yes, we are gonna recess.